Seeing we have a quorum, a call for a motion to pay claims.
Sir, I would move that we can pay the claims in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars and eighty-five cents. Checks written for payroll liabilities for four one sixteen in the amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eighty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. For a total of five hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
So here a second, second. Do we have anything else? That we want to talk about on the, there's no, nothing in the...
Was there any questions on that?
And the questions in the payments, we have none.
Yeah, and your honor, we're just, we're still receiving some comments back on those contract for services. I think we've got one turned in. We're hoping to have that for the May second meeting.
So we'll have...
Finance committee to review that.
We'll have, how long will we have to review that? Will that be a full meeting or an hour or what?
Um, yeah, we may have to look at that depending on how much time you...
Well, that's what I'm asking. What are we thinking right now?
Yeah, we may have to take, well, it just depends on if, if there's gonna be a lot of changes or a lot of talking about it. If we're gonna keep things fairly standard or want to cut or it may go longer so we...
We know yet?
No, we don't. We'll, but we'll have a better sense by the second.
By the second of May.
Yeah, that's our next meeting and we'll get the packets out the Thursday before, so you'll have some time to think about it. We may have to start this meeting at six thirty or six fifteen.
Okay, you'll keep us heads up on that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
You want to vote on this first?
Vote on, we already voted on it.
No, we didn't.
We didn't vote on it? We had a second. Okay, so we want to vote on consideration of claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done. Finance committee adjourned.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to be here this night in city council. Thankful for the opportunity to serve and to help our fellow citizens. Please bless us with insight, understanding that we might do so. Thankful Father for the moisture which Thou hast richly blessed us with, and we say this humbly, name Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, your honor, Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present. Declare the, let's see, I guess we need a motion to excuse Holly, huh?
Yes.
Your honor, I would move that we excuse Holly Gibbon for this meeting.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I declare that we have a quorum. The chair would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. Your honor, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the agenda as written. Seconded. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your honor?
Go ahead Courtney.
Mr. Cooper will not be in attendance tonight, so that item needs to be removed from the agenda.
Okay. So that is injury prevention resources presentation by Noel Cooper, number nine. Okay, so we need a motion to amend the agenda to remove item nine.
Your honor, I make a motion that we amend the agenda to eliminate item nine.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Is there any, anything else we need to worry about there? Okay, we'll vote on the, on the original motion as amended to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and passes. Communications from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record. Doesn't look like we have anybody who wants to talk to us. Consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, your honor, approval of the minutes, April fifth, two thousand and sixteen, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes, April twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, council work session meeting, approval of the minutes, April nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, finance committee meeting, approval of finance committee recommendations for April nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, approval of the municipal court report for the month of March. Open container permit application was received for the boot bar on May seventh, two thousand and sixteen, for the crawfish boil at seven oh two East Main from ten a.m. to six p.m. And ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero one sec, for second reading, and I'll read the title for statutory requirements. This is a, a section regarding purchase, use, or possession of tobacco by minors, proposed ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero one. An ordinance amending title nine, public peace, morals, and welfare, revising chapter nine point one six, offenses by or against minors. Section nine point one six point zero three zero, purchase, use, or possession of tobacco by minors prohibited of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all accord ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict with therewith and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Are there any items requiring further discussion? Your honor? Mr. Larson?
Finance committee approved claims of the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars and eighty-five cents. Checks written for payroll and liabilities on April first in the amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eighty-three dollars and forty-nine cents, for a total of five hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of consent agenda.
Your honor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda. Second?
Your honor, I would abstain from the Bailey Enterprises items on the finance report.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, motion passes. Discussion regarding proposed revisions to title thirteen of the Riverton Municipal Code. Business Services Managers Report.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, council. It's nice to have the opportunity to visit with you this evening. And the purpose of my communication with you this evening is just to let you know that we have reviewed a couple of sections of procedures in our billing code, title thirteen point oh four. Billing procedure for public services and thirteen point oh eight, water service system of the Riverton Municipal Code. And we've identified some areas in our code that are quite outdated. We are asking for some possible consideration of change. And the reason that I'm here in front of you today is just to give you a heads up on what we may be asking for over the course of the next few meetings and to give you some opportunity to review sections of the code that I'm bringing forth to you tonight and wrap your heads around it and maybe consider some change on those. And the first section that we have is thirteen point zero four dot zero three zero, it's discontinuation of service. It's currently titled termination. We are just simply requesting a change in the title to reflect discontinuation so that it reflects the terminology in title thirteen point oh eight point four seven zero. Termination and discontinuation are synonymous terms. We're just trying to bring it together so that it all basically says the same thing. And section thirteen point zero four point zero four zero, payment arrangements. Currently, our procedure is that the Director of Administrative Services or the customer super, service supervisor may designate or enter into payment agree, agreements with our citizens. And we are requesting a change to add his or her designee to that particular title. And the reason being that we would like our finance clerks to be able to have the ability to make service, uh, payment arrangements with our citizens pursuant to our current code. So there would be no changes in what we're doing. It's just that we're allowing them that extra access to be able to serve the citizens as they're doing that. And we're also requesting to remove the requirements of a notarized signature of a landowner. Currently, any person that is renting a property that wishes to enter into a payment agreement, it is required that the landowner sign that and that it is also notarized. Um, we're finding that, um, certain individuals want to take those payment arrangement forms to their landlords and then return them to us with their signatures simply because it provides a more convenient, uh, measure for the landlords. And we follow up with a verbal conversation with the landlord, so we're actually requesting that we strike that requirement for a notarization, um, of the landlord's signature in that section. The next requested change is a return check fee. It's currently written in our code that we charge a twenty dollar return check fee for any item that comes back, whether it's account closed or insufficient funds. Um, I've been employed with the City of Riverton since two thousand and ten and we've charged thirty dollars and it's been thirty dollars prior to that. And so we are requesting that we change that fee in our code to thirty dollars to reflect industry standards. And I did visit with the City of Gillette, City of Casper, City of Sheridan, and the City of Rollins, and they all currently charge a thirty dollar fee for return checks as well. So as you can see, some of this is just minor detail. I am requesting that we do, um, provide an insert to a new title, uh, base charges for services. And define that in instances where multifamily residential units are serviced by a single water meter, that the base charge for water and sanitary sewer will be billed for each unit. We currently do that now. Um, this has been a point of contention with a property owner who owns multi-units. Uh, the city is currently charging the base rate per unit on multifamily units as per definition of what a residence is in our city code. However, it's not really clear, so inserting the title and explanation will clarify how base charges are billed. Now again, we're asking for just consideration of this change and I think it's important that we understand that it's going through three separate readings so that our property owners would have the opportunity to, opportunity to speak, um, in front of you on their behalf with regard to this suggested change. Um, and then as far as changes to the rec, uh, to simplify definition, we're just asking to change the definition of a property owner. Currently, it's defined as an owner of real property, including not only the owner of the whole, but any part owner, joint owner, tenant in common, or joint tenant of the whole, or a part of such building or land, and include any agent of such owner and where such owner is a body corporate. It includes the managing agent or officer within the city. Huge definition. We're asking to shorten that as a property owner, meaning the person that has the legal title of, title to the property as determined by the records in the county courthouse. So it's basically the same thing. It's just in a shortened version. And then also identifying what a person means then. If we're gonna change that definition, we also want to define a person. Um, let's see, section thirteen point eight point zero four zero, um, agreement to rules and regulations and failure to comply. Uh, the only thing that we're recommending in this is that we're combining title and definition of two separate sections. Currently, it is thirteen point zero eight point zero four zero and thirteen point zero eight point one hundred. We're just combining that into one title. Um, we all know that people agree to the rules, but there's also a separate section that explains what happens if you fail to comply with the rules. We're combining it all into one. Um, let's see, there is a section thirteen point eight point zero eight zero that we're requesting to remove from the code. Uh, it just identifies that the city is not liable for broken pipes or appurtenances. And Article three and four of the Riverton Municipal Code already identifies service lines, meters, and responsibilities. So this section is redundant. It's written twice, basically explained twice in the code. Um, fees, um, so there's a, a section in our code that explains our utility fees. In looking back on these fees, uh, they have not been changed as far as water tap fees since nineteen ninety-four and water service fees since nineteen ninety-four, as written in our code book. Um, I want to make the recommendation that we change the way that the city currently publishes our utility fees. Um, it requires searching through multiple resolutions in order for individuals to identify what our charges are. Uh, if we identified this through ordinance, it would give the public the opportunity to hear about our rate changes on three ordinances. And in addition, it would be published in our municipal code, so when an individual would go to the code to find out what they're, what they're paying for their utilities, it would be very clear and they wouldn't have to go through resolutions, supplements, amendments, different things like that to get that information. And further, we have a pretty extensive description on how we compute our utility rates. Um, and it's basically computed by the Consumer Price Index, um, ending in May of a specific time period and, um, that the city council would review that and adjust it annually. Um, I did do some research with other municipalities as well, and there aren't many municipalities that actually publish what their rate formulas are. Some municipalities actually hire outside consulting firms, other ones base their rates dependent upon capital projects coming up, uh, the condition of their enterprise funds, um, the condition of their finances overall. So currently what we're publishing is the CPI, um, so I would recommend that we actually strike that. And then just note that the rates established shall be reviewed by the council and may be adjusted at any time by ordinance or resolution following public notice and hearing. And leave it at that. Uh, the sec, the next section is defacing injuring or bypassing of meters. It's section thirteen point oh eight point three nine zero. Uh, the only thing that I would suggest is that we add that our city employees have access to, at any reasonable time, um, to premises supplied by utility services by the city, um, for purposes of examining, um, our instruments and protecting the utility from abuse. And we've recently found that some folks take their meters out of their property and bypass them with plumbing equipment. And then the meters have then been tampered with or they're no longer obviously working effectively. And so if we put that in there, then it protects us as a, as an organization in order to, um, let citizens know that they can't be pulling their water meters at liberty. Um, the next section I have is thirteen point oh eight point four seven zero, um, discontinuance of service for failure to pay. Um, right now, when we send out a bill, um, we allow our citizens approximately three weeks to pay their bill before, um, it is due. Uh, it's due on the fifteenth of each month and there is not a grace period as far as a late payment goes on a utility bill. If they don't pay by the fifteenth, they will receive a late charge. We then will give them another seven days to pay that bill before we send out a shut-off notice on the bills. Then we send a shut-off notice, which provides them another seven days to pay their bill before we actually go out and shut it off. And then approximately two days before we go perform the shut-off process, we also have been doing phone calls to customers through a call-out system, letting them know that we're going to shut out their bill. So we take some pretty extensive measures to try to collect our bills, on our bills before we have to go out and, and shut that off. Um, we're gonna make the, we would like to make the recommendation, um, that if they fail to pay their monthly charges within seven calendar days, that we shall discontinue services until the account is paid in full. And we would also like to put the statement in that failure to receive your utility bill does not relieve your obligation to pay your bill. We have lots of folks that rely on their shut-off notices before they decide that they're ready to pay their bill. And some folks, I didn't get my bill. It's pretty standard that the bills are due on the fifteenth of each month. In addition, we also offer the email bill, um, option if they would like to receive their bill via email. They can also receive it on a paper bill, or they can always go out to our city website and pull up their utility account. And it also provides their bill amount and the due date as well. So we're just trying to shorten the process a little bit as far as the measures that we take to try to collect on those bills. Um, also thirteen point zero eight point five hundred, uh, the fee for reinstating discontinued services. Um, this change is recommended to reflect the current water department business hours. Right now, it's written in our code that the, um, the reinstatement hours, um, are during water service business hours and it's from seven a.m. to five p.m. Currently, our water collection and distribution department, um, works from seven to four. So if they have to go out between four and five, they are on on-call hours at that point. So we just want to correct that in our code that reflects their current business hours. And again, all this information, there's a lot of it here. Um, I just wanted to give you a heads up and let you know that it will be presented, but give you the opportunity to, to look into it a little bit deeper before you have to make some final decisions on that. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Your honor?
Mr. Bailey? I, I got a couple. I guess, is there any place else in statutes that addresses this, people tampering and bypassing their meters and stuff?
It's a possibility, yes. I would need to review this section under meters, um, and I, I'm guessing that, that there would be, um, some verbiage in there with...
Because I guess, to me, that's one, that's way more than the penalty for, you know, not paying your bill on time or something like that. That ought to be fairly severe, I guess, to me. And we ought to have that pretty cut and dried. And I don't know if there's a way to monitor it other than just seeing that their bill doesn't have any, any volume on it for the next month. So they always get a free month then, you know, or whatever, but, and then I guess on the, the, the time for late payment, so you're saying the, the bill's due on the fifteenth.
Right.
So you're saying by the twenty-first, if they haven't paid, you're gonna shut the water off as opposed to now you're sort of giving them another week?
Correct. That is the proposal that we would like to shorten the period and the amount of, um, contact and warning that we are currently by code required to provide. Um, I will say that we are not required by code to do the phone callouts that we currently do. Um, and unfortunately, when we do these as a courtesy to our citizens, they respond in a manner that they don't pay their bill until they get their phone call. So we're kind of trying to educate people a little bit more to be responsible to pay those before we have to do that.
I guess, I just know from my own experience, we, we do a lot of mailing of bills and stuff and not to knock the U.S. Postal Service, but the mail is getting far worse than better, so I would strongly encourage people to get email bills because we have the same problem.
And they're free.
I sent a letter to Salt Lake City and it took fourteen days to get there. So I mean, you know, it's challenging, so.
Mr. Larson?
Do we have a history on, on the, uh, website? Other words, we can look up the bill amount. Is there a his, a back history on consumption or usage?
Currently not. Um, I do foresee that coming in the future, that that is something that we would be able to, uh, we would like to be able to offer to our, our citizens. I think the more information that we can get out, um, through technology, because we are such a technology-driven country right now, world, that, um, yeah, I think it would be better for us to be able to do that and I do, I do foresee that coming in the future.
Uh, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
If you go back to the top of this and under where you changed the paragraph on termination, you changed termination to discontinuance, I looked down through that paragraph and I see that you've used the word termination in there several times.
I see that Lars as well. Um, actually, I caught that when I was reviewing my documentation today. And I, I, I put the code out there as it currently stands, so yes, I do understand there's a, a couple of places where terminate is listed that we probably want to change that to discontinue in our proposed ordinance changes.
Okay. Is there an alternative to doing the base charges? Um, say you've got a fourplex with a single meter. Could you charge? Have a single base charge? For residential commercial?
I think that that would be something that would have to be reviewed by the senior staff and the council as far as if you're making...
Be a di- different way to do it.
Yeah.
You just have, you still only have one base charge per meter instead of worrying about how many units were occupied.
That's something that certainly would be a item of discussion under the ordinance change.
How many, how, how, how many folks get their water turned off?
Oh, you know, well, we've been doing really well because we take such extreme measures. We send out approximately three hundred and fifty shut-off notices in a month. And by the time we get done with our personal phone calls and the shut-off notice process and we hold off an extra day, we usually will end up with about fifty to thirty. And it doesn't take long for the word to get out when our crews are out shutting off water, so we do get some folks in on shut-off day, the morning of shut-off day, to either pay or to call to make payment arrangements.
That many, huh?
Right.
How, how many total customers are there?
Oh, I think we have about forty-two hundred meters out in our system.
Mr. Larson?
So how many do we have shut off any given period? Is there twenty or fifteen?
By the time we end up doing, performing the shut-off process and the customers coming back in and getting their water services reinstated, there's generally less than ten that leave their water off on that day. And within about a week's period of time, we will have more people come in and get their bills paid up and their water services turned back on. Um, generally speaking, I would say there's probably two to three that remain off and it's situations where people have vacated properties and failed to notify us. Um, or they're being evicted from a property and failed to notify us, so it's generally situations where they're no longer there.
Okay, then, so then what process do we have to collect, uh, bills that haven't been paid?
Currently, as it is, and code has written, a landowner is ultimately responsible for any unpaid bills left by a tenant as far as a renter situation goes. We do collect a hundred and fifty dollars from a renter at the time that they move into the, into the property. And that helps to cover the cost of approximately two months' worth of utility bills and does somewhat protect the landowner and the city from exposure in the event that a person should leave and fail to pay the utility bill. Um, as far as a homeowner's situation goes, they own the home. The city can place a lien on their property for an unpaid utility bill. Uh, we've seen situations with foreclosures where the foreclosure company will come in and, um, they'll pay the bill, um, clean things up in order to get the service, um, reestablished so that they can sell the property. We also make phone calls. Uh, we print out a report every month and when there's bills that are past due on folks that have moved out, we, we try our best to collect on behalf of the property owner. Very last case scenario, we will turn a customer over to collection at the collection center. We try not to do that.
Okay, so in, in the case of the trailer court, where somebody could, I guess, hook onto their trailer and haul it off?
Correct.
They might move somewhere else. We'd have to chase them in order to collect that or to decide whether or not we would pursue them.
Actually, the service stays with the property. So the, it's the, it's the dirt is, whoever owns the dirt is considered the property owner in a trailer park, mobile home situation. I did contact the Fremont County Clerk's Office and they did indicate that a mobile home is not considered real property because it's not affixed to a permanent foundation. Because they can hook up and pull out in the night.
I see, I see, okay.
Your honor?
Mr. Larson?
So we're, so if I own the trailer court, the person that owns the dirt, the sewer connection, the water connection, that goes with the dirt, I am responsible?
Yes, sir. And we do ask our homeowner, our landowners, our trailer park owners, if they want services established in their tenant's name, that they do, um, we do ask them to sign the service application, allowing us to establish service in their tenant's name, and we do collect a hundred and fifty dollar deposit.
Your honor?
Mr. Bailey?
I guess and this doesn't apply to what your changes are, but, so this is the ordinance and we have our rates published in there. Would we not be more, I guess, flexible if we just said that as per the rate schedule and then maybe publish an annual rate schedule that we're going to use? As opposed to having to change the ordinance every time we want to change a rate or something?
Do you want me to address that? Um, right now, we, we do publish our rates by resolution. The sug- The suggestion to do it by ordinance is so that it is heard on three readings and it does give our citizens and our public an opportunity to understand that the rate changes are going to be going into effect. And that there's three opportunities to, to research and investigate and speak on their behalf if they want to do that. Right now, since it is published by resolution, those rates are changed and sometimes people don't even know that they've been changed.
So we're doing both?
No, we're currently doing it by resolution.
So we, we just do it in the ordinance?
Well, I'm a little confused on that because what I see in the proposal here is, is for tap fees.
There's also another page that has water service fees.
Oh, I see, okay. We're gonna, we're gonna.
I guess the same thing would apply to that.
Yeah.
It might be easier just to deal with the fees as a piece by itself as opposed to all the other regulations regarding that. But I guess it's really ends up being the same if we want to have, I think we want to have three readings and all that of the rate changes too, for the public to give us their input.
If you currently look at our city code under our tap fees, it states that our tap fees are, let me pull my information out here. For a three-quarter inch meter, right now in our code book, it shows that our tap fee is three hundred dollars. We're currently charging five seventy-four twenty-five. But it's been changed by resolution, so it's not reflecting in our current code.
And I guess that's, that's where I'm getting to, is I think we need one place that we're going to put the rate that we change annually or whatever and not have it to where we have a discrepancy between the two. I think that would be cleaner.
Do we, do we change it every year?
No, sir, we do not.
Or, I guess, whenever we do change it, but we're not, if we're not changing it both places, then there's a discrepancy there.
Right.
If one place says three hundred and one, says five seventy-four, we need to have one place that we put the rate and that's ought to be the place the rate is.
That's right.
And if we change it, we can do the three readings and all that, but.
And there is a clause in here, item C, that says the fee for tapping on may additionally be adjusted from time to time by resolution of the city council following public notice and hearing, so.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Councilman Bailey, we do publish the resolution when there is a water rate increase, however it is after the fact. Because it's, it's expensive to publish. And I would ask that Mia address, when it comes to shut-off notices, if you could address the supplies, the postage and the time it takes for shut-off notices? Because this has been one of my, my monthly angst moments is when I see them work through the shut-off process and it's not gaining efficiency. What it's doing is our customers are relying on a shut-off notice instead of their bill. So when we have nine to ten percent of our customers waiting for a shut-off notice, maybe we can increase that efficiency by saying, we'll do the call manager. We can make arrangements, we can notify you on a monthly basis. So if you would just address the cost supplies and postage with shut-offs.
As far as our postage goes, again, we send out about three hundred and fifty shut-off notices. And that's in addition to what we pay to send out the bill. And on the bill itself, it does say past due charges are due immediately, please pay to avoid interruption. So we're paying the regular postage rate times another three hundred and fifty envelopes just to give folks another notification that they're, they're past due on their bills. As far as the time involved, it takes, there's three of us and we each take turns as far as producing the shut-off notices. But we actually stuff the envelopes and run all that through the postage machine. And then we take the time, which we're glad to do, to make payment arrangements for some folks just simply because they obviously can't, can't pay it at that time. We did incorporate a procedure where we had folks that were making payment arrangements every single month for the entire year. So we did incorporate a procedure where we will allow them three payment arrangements per year. That way, if somebody gets in a bind in a financial situation, it gives them time to get out of it. But then it doesn't become a situation where it's more the norm than the exception. As far as other time spent, it takes us approximately an hour to run shut-off notices from start to finish each month.
Go ahead, Mr. Larson.
Yeah, but what happens if things got so bad that you could only do a shut-off notice? No phone calls? No stuffing of bills, nothing? You've told them once, that's it? What I'm saying is, is what we're occurring here is an extraordinary amount of effort to collect. It's the ninety-ten rule. We're collecting ninety percent of our budget, but ten percent is causing us an extraordinary amount. And so you really, at that point, you want to say to yourself, maybe that ten percent isn't worth keeping.
Well.
And, and I'm, and I'm not meaning it as being mean or we're providing water. But that, the, the bill that they're paying does not reflect the cost that they're causing.
Well, and certainly I do know that other municipalities do assess a fee for shut-off notices. And I saw one today on a specific municipality that charges twenty dollars. If we have to send a shut-off notice out to you, there's going to be an additional twenty dollar cost. I guess the thing to consider about that is if the person can't pay their bill or they're struggling to pay their bill to begin with, do we, do we do anybody any favors in assessing another cost? Although, there has to be some point where people understand that we have a specific time to make payment arrangements and they can do that at no cost to them. And also the time that's involved from the staff in trying to collect these past due bills. So it might be something to consider.
Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey.
I, I guess, the other alternative would be, again, like you said, put a fee on, if, if you have a late, if you have to send out a notice, it's going to cost them twenty bucks. And then if they have, let's just hypothetically say, if they have two late payments within a certain period of time, you put them on a COD where they have to pay in advance. I mean, that's how the real world does it. You don't pay your bill, you get your credit shut off. And so, I mean, if you have a late payment, maybe once is okay, but twice, you put them on COD and they have to come in and put a hundred dollars down to get their meter turned on. And if they don't have another hundred dollars there by the next month, they, you know, I mean, again, that will save us a huge amount of time and expense. And like you said, you have these habitual people that are just dragging their feet. Well, if they figure out they got to pay in advance, if they don't pay on time, maybe they're going to pay on time.
Your Honor.
Mr. Weaver.
I, I agree with the fee. I, I think Councilman Larson brings up a good point in the sense that otherwise, the rest of everybody in the system is subsidizing these people for not paying their bill. Because it's taking time and effort out of the system instead of if, if, if we have to send out a late charge or a late bill, then you should be paying for that. And, and that's the fairest way really to do it.
So, so you send out three hundred and fifty no, shut-off notices?
Approximately, on average, yes.
And then by the end of the period, the seven days, you're down to fifty or thirty, and then you're calling those people on the telephone?
Yes, we are.
Okay, do, is that a, is that a live call?
It is a recorded call.
Recorded call.
Yeah, and we send out a little more than fifty. The fifty is on the day that we're scheduled to shut off. These are the people that still have not paid and that's after we have sent a call campaign. So that's, that's after the fact. And it is a recording call, a recorded call, and it just says that it's a courtesy call reminding you that your services are dis, are subject to disconnect on specific date and it's generally one to two days before. You can pay your bill by phone by using a debit or credit card. Please contact our office. And that's what it says.
Okay.
Because I could imagine sitting, sitting here making three hundred and fifty telephone calls.
Well, and that's why we incorporated the call campaign manager and it has been somewhat effective to the degree that we get people in. But it's become ineffective because people are waiting for that phone call before they pay their bills, so.
Yeah, so it would just, you could start that phone call on the fifteenth, I guess.
We would have a huge number of calls at that point because between the fifteenth.
But it's a computer that's doing it.
It is, but we have to. Hand key all those phone numbers in.
You have to put all those phone numbers in, I see, yeah. Oh, maybe they'd be the same numbers month after month. Uh-huh?
Yeah.
Great. Mia, thank you for your time.
I appreciate it.
And your thoughtfulness and consideration here. Thank you. You've got to have one of the hardest jobs in the city.
And that's what we do.
Okay, good, thank you. Is there, is there any other business? Is there something that we could do for another half an hour?
Your Honor, I have a slight problem here. Going over the minutes of the work session on the adjournment, and I don't know how to solve this problem, but it says there being no further business to come before the council. Councilmember Larson moved and seconded by Councilmember Martinez to adjourn the meeting at eight-ten PM. And the motion passed. I don't remember making that motion, seconding that motion, because I was presiding.
Your Honor, we would be very happy to look at the video and listen to the digital recording and correct that if needed.
Thank you.
And if we do need to correct it, we can make a motion to amend something previously adopted.
Okay.
Would that work for you, Councilwoman Martinez?
Whatever we need to do to fix it, because I, I just don't remember. I think it'd be, we could, we can wait till the next meeting to correct it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good to me. I, I just don't remember doing it. And I was looking for it earlier tonight and I couldn't find it. And I finally found it.
Well, I do use your name at will, so.
That's okay.
I've been called worse.
Your Honor, I do have another action item that we could, I don't think it'll take much discussion. But it, it's regarding the old skate park equipment that's in City Park.
Yes.
So apparently Hudson is interested in taking that. And the skate park has been working with Mayor Anderson over there. And so we'd just like to gift that to them and we can do that as, as a public agency to another public agency. And all it requires is just a motion. And so we'd like to propose that so we can get that stuff out of our park and they can enjoy it.
Terrific.
Your Honor, I would move that we donate the unused skate park equipment to the city of Hudson.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion?
Your Honor. It's the town of Hudson. I don't think the town is a civic.
I mean, is it?
Town of Hudson.
Your Honor, is, is the town of Hudson going to take that over there or are we going to do that?
That was my question. Your Honor, they will be in charge of all mobilization for that equipment.
And the skate park, or the skate club is, is.
Is fine with that?
Fine with that. I know there was some idea that some of it belonged to them personally or something like that.
Your Honor, I believe they still would like to potentially auction off some of the equipment that they own. But the equipment owned by the city of Riverton will be gifted over to them.
Got it, got it. Okay, terrific. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, that's done. So council committee reports and council member roundtable, do we have anything to talk about? Mr. Canaan.
Just real quick, I'm not sure how, what the pause went about. If people buy stuff on like Amazon, for example, you can now go on to Amazon Smiles. And whatever your purchase is there, a percentage of that will go back to pause here in Riverton. And also on igive.com, it's the same way. And I guess the iGive site, you can do your hotel, airline tickets, car rental, bigger type items. But again, whatever you purchase on those two sites, a percentage of that goes back to, goes back to our local animal shelter.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Martinez?
I don't have anything tonight.
Mr. Larson?
Other than I attended the recycling committee on Monday. And there is still no determination of if they're going to further the recycling or not. They were reminded of the budget that we have coming up and completed, but that didn't seem to faze them on the urgency. They're still discussing and working through the issues. That's all I have.
Thank you. Nothing, Mr. Peterson? Thank you. City administrator?
Yes, Your Honor. Couple announcements. Tickets are on sale for Denver Air Connections, so get on the site and book your flight to Denver. That's exciting news. I attended the recycling forum that was last night here at City Hall. We had about fifty people. Pretty good turnout, a lot of discussion. I, I think that a lot of the solid waste board was in attendance at these, these meetings and I think they've enjoyed those. And so hopefully, someone can find the silver lining and come up with a, with an idea. I think a lot of the same things come up in these discussions. I think most people feel a moral issue about it and they're willing to pay for it. I think is the bottom line for a lot of them. They'd said that they would take our reduction off our five dollar bill incentive and they would even pay in order to have recycling. Final thing is, in our work session, Councilman Bailey brought up the issue of rate increases for water and sewer. Just wanted to bring that up and get some clear direction from the council on that. If you want us to bring forth any recommendations for rate increases, the CPI is in the negative. So, I mean, obviously, we couldn't rate, do it based on that. It would have to be based on capital projects and just with economic time. So if the council's wanting us to do that, we would, we would do that and bring it forth and recommend some rate increases. But we wanted to get some direction from the council before just doing that.
Your Honor, Mr. Bailey.
I, I guess, just to me, with the future expenses that we're going to have with our North Federal Project specifically to the tune of five million dollars, I guess, I think we need to definitely look at where our reserves are and make sure that we have those in good shape so that when we do hopefully find some grants or those kind of, some kind of financing that we can do, that we have adequate, you know, money to fund those projects. And I think we would be not doing our fiscal duty if we don't make sure those funds are in good shape by the time we get there and not that far away, so.
Mr. Martinez?
When was the last time we rate, had a rate increase?
Yeah, it was twenty fourteen, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Yeah, we didn't have one last year.
Mr. Larson.
I was wondering when we are, while Mia was talking about future adjustments to the master meter and, and the different definitions that that would come at a future point. We are going to put that in the newspaper of sorts so that the, so that they can be notified through reading of the our newspaper, the Riverton Ranger. What I'm talking about is anytime we change, we change the tap fees, we're going to discuss that and have three readings on that, correct?
Yes, Your Honor. Yeah, that's, that's a proposal is to make those ordinances.
I know that the, the consistency of metering in this town is inconsistent. I have, I mean, when Mike talks about raising the rate on water, I just cringe. And yet I want it, but when you own several properties that the water bills are a thousand dollars a month and you say to yourself, geez, you know, in the summer, in the winter time, it's four hundred. It's about fifty dollars a family. So if you own a fourplex and you're paying the water bill on that, that's, that's a large sum of money. Well, blacktop the back part. Well, I like green. And so I understand that we need the money. But I'm caught in between a bale of hay and a, and an empty wallet. So hopefully, we'll have a hearing on that. So, uh, hopefully, we'll have a hearing on that. Thank you.
I guess, I don't have enough information. So, um, you know, what the, you know, what the reserves are in those funds and- I guess it wouldn't, I guess it wouldn't matter, I guess it wouldn't matter what's in there, it would be small in comparison to what we're gonna be spending.
And what we're gonna be spending, what you've saved, you said, well, we knew, we should've saved four times as much, and then you look back and you say, how could we have done that?
Right.
Based on our economic conditions. Don't tell me, Martin.
I'm, I'm, I'm being quiet over here.
Waste, so, so, um, we don't actually have a waste or a stormwater fund or anything like that. Well, I guess that's something to think about, then.
Your Honor, and I know the chances of getting this in the future would be slim, but when I first got on council, one of the things we did is we toured the city facilities, and we went and toured the wastewater treatment plant, okay? We are dumping, if I remember correctly, one point six million gallons a day back into the river that we don't get credit for, and that water's been treated to a very high standard. If we could find a way to push that back into an irrigation system, let's say, for the city, then Kyle wouldn't have to spend an extra seven hundred and fifty dollars a month on his apartment complex, because he'd be getting irrigation water that's not being processed through the water treatment plant, so we'd save some money there. He'd save on his bill, but that would take a fairly major infrastructure project, but in the long run, that might- and, you know, we have troubles with our irrigation system, the open ditch system is challenging at best, a- and so I guess it'd be something to at least put a pencil to.
How much do we dump a day?
One point six trillion gallons of water get put back into the Wind River that have been treated to almost drinking water quality standards.
Well, at least it could be used for-
Could be used for irrigation. Now, the problem is, it's on the downhill side, so we'd have to get it back to the uphill side to, you know, we'd have to have a pressurized irrigation system or something along that line. But, you know, in the long run, it might pay dividends.
Your Honor?
I think we got away from what Mr. Weaver was asking for. He wants to, to know if we wanted, want him to pursue looking at rate changes or not. And, uh, I don't think we've come to consensus if we want him to do that or not yet.
Isn't that the question you were asking, sir?
Yes.
Is it fair to ask that if we try to forecast where we think we're gonna be at beginning of North Federal operation, middle of North Federal operation, ending, and see if it's feasible for us to try to be proactive, instead of trying to be reactive at the end of the?
Your Honor, I think, I think for sure we have enough projects out there to probably justify a rate increase. I think our reluctance in doing it is economic times and just the negative CPI. And you also have to look at, really, when you look at a rate increase, short-term, it doesn't do a lot to gain a whole bunch of revenue that you're gonna be able to use for a project that's coming up in the next year or two, because it doesn't build that much, so it really would be for a long-term more solution. And, and we have long-term issues, I mean, we have an aging water plant, we have an aging sewer plant, all those are gonna eventually have to be updated fairly quickly. And so, um, I, I think the justification, we would be able to show that, it's just a matter of if that's, uh, politically the way to do that in, in these times that we are in right now.
Kyle, when is our, um, one percent tax up?
Your Honor, that is up for vote November of twenty sixteen.
That's this year.
That's correct.
What are we doing on that, anything?
Regarding the, uh-
Regarding the benefit of, of utilization of that one percent.
Your Honor, there is a PAC committee in the community that is, um, advertising and promoting that that, um, one percent fund be passed again on the ballot. From a city standpoint, we're not in a position to, um, go out and, forgive me, the terms, uh-
Lobby?
Lobby, thank you, it was slipping my mind. Uh, from our standpoint, we are planning the current funds that we have to the best of our ability. Uh, we do have an outlay this year for one percent projects, and as we've mentioned before in the one percent committee meetings, and then also here in council, we'd like to reserve a substantial portion of the existing balance and put towards the North Federal reconstruction. When it was put towards ballot, the one percent fund was passed with an ability to update the low-level infrastructure, so water, sewer, and storm sewer. And so, we'd like to plan to use as much money as possible for that upcoming project, and we're planning right now to be able to do so, even if the one percent fund does not get repassed on, uh, this, this upcoming November.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Your Honor, I, I guess, I would, I don't know if we're looking for a motion, or do we have a motion that we're acting on?
We're looking for a consensus.
Okay. I, I would suggest that if staff could give us some more information on where our reserves are, what our expected outlays are in the next three or four years with this project coming up, where the rates are, maybe in comparison to some other cities of similar size, so that we can look at that data and be able to make an educated decision on where we think we could maybe get some movement.
That'd be interesting to me, to see what other communities charge for water, and, and whether or not a rate increase would make any difference. I mean, you know, if we doubled everybody's water bill, would it, would it make a dent? Well, you couldn't double the bill, you know, so whatever we're gonna do is not gonna make a dent. Yeah, do you see what I mean? Yeah, so we'd have to, we'd have to kind of play with that a little bit and see what, what that looked like. But, but let's, let's go ahead and do that, let's do a little research on it, and see if there's, if increasing the water bills would make, would make any kind of a significant difference, or if we're totally at the mercy of, uh, the state of Wyoming to, uh, fund those, uh, activities. Or, or, or we wind up borrowing a bunch of money to, to get it done, okay?
We'll get a, we'll get a report, you know, okay?
Anything else, Mr. Weaver?
No.
I guess I don't have anything else. So, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
Removed and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye.